Okay, you ready? Can we start?
Yeah.
Side conversation. Sorry. Okay. So we'll call the meeting to order at 6:04. And we'll do the pledge allegiance. You guys are ready. All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible and just as strong. So we're going to start with public input. Is there anybody that would like to speak?
We have a student here from Student Council with a student report for the board. This is a new segment that we'd like to add to the board agenda if possible. Drew Kennon here is a member of our Student Council. And he's here with some information. Go ahead, buddy.
Is it on?
It is.
Shipyard volunteers from the shipyard have been coming to visit grade five students each Wednesday. They have been supporting grade five to build submarines and supplying us with tools, materials, and this awesome opportunity. We are drilling, soldering, pipe cutting, and building these submarines in small groups. And yes, there are safety goggles involved. Where is it? Where is it? Where is it? It was really nice of them to supply us with real equipment that I have to use in the military. U and H will be letting us use their pool on November 21st to try our submarines in real life. SMS Essentials are monthly themes that we celebrate. In September, we focused on community. In October, we did courage. In this new month, we are talking about gratitude. We talk about these during the day. During the day, we made posters about ways we show these skills. We celebrate the spirit of six each Friday at the end and at the end of the month. We have an assembly to celebrate. Ms. Wentworth and Ms. Kinnear's class presented in September, and grade two put together her assembly on courage in October. On November 22nd, Scott Potteet, who used to be a Stratum resident, is coming to give a presentation to all of Stratum, no, to all of SMS. He will be joining his base mission and is coming to share the courage and gratitude he has surrounding this amazing experience. We are looking forward to having him.
Great job.
Very good.
That was awesome. Thank you for sharing that. We love that. Is there anybody else who wants to speak for public input? Keep the timer going, I guess. So thank you. That was really great. All right. I guess we'll move on to approval of minutes. Does anybody have any changes for the minutes? For the October 19th public board minutes?
Nope.
No? Okay. What about the, if we move on to the October 19th, the non-public board minutes? Thank you.
No changes.
No changes? Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the public and non-public board minutes from October 19th?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Ben? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to the superintendent report.
So our time has been doing budgets, budgets and budgets. Lots of meetings and kudos to the business office and Michelle and Molly Fisher, meeting with the teams four, five, six, seven times and then kind of going over things again. So just want to recognize there's a lot of thought put into budget development. And we hope what we present tonight is a hard budget to present as well as one that's fiscally responsible. So trying to balance those two is always really tough. Along with that, I continue to coach. You know, while the administrators, that's going well, they've set their goals. They're all around the leadership competencies and building themselves as leaders and building capacity. That's always super exciting to see what they're going to work on for the year. We also have some national presentations coming up where I have a team presenting at the NABIDA, which is the National Association of Behavior Interventions and Threat Assessment, which is next week. And Selena will be joining us from Stratum as part of our BIT team here. And then we have an elementary K-5 group that is presenting with me on engaging families in the BIT process, which is the behavior interventions process when there's safety either to yourself or to others, like kind of a tier four team that's more of a regional team. So this team that Selena and Kate Belanger are part of and Tiffany Green from here encompasses Stratum, Newfields, and Exeter. So all of those schools are that team. We meet about once a month and schools bring referrals and then we work through that. We did have the Newfields Police Chief as part, but as you know, Nate left. So we're in process of training the new police chief who's very interested and will become part of that team also. So it's kind of pulling the community together and trying to think of interventions outside to really wrap around students that there's high concerns around. So we're looking forward to going to that. It is in West Palm Beach, I will say, so it'd be too hard to take.
I dropped the ball on that one.
And certainly not, last but not least is negotiations. We're working through negotiations. And so as you know, the ESPs are here and Exeter, they are teachers, and Newfields were paraprofessionals, and Brentwood was paraprofessionals. So those are the four we're negotiating this year, and those are all moving along well. And hopefully we'll get wrapped up within the next few weeks. So that's what we've been doing at the central office.
Great. Awesome. Does that include your financial report?
Usually, Michelle would do that, yeah.
So we included the financial report in your board packet. You'll see that the change from the information that you got on your last board meeting, we see some increases in salaries, substitutes, supplies and services, technology, and some special ed transport according to the needs of the students. So right now, we're projecting remaining expenses at the end of the year at $295,749. And right now, we have no unusual revenues that we've received.
I'm going to add to that before you have questions. So that's low for us this time of year. So Kate and I have frozen the budget, meaning only contractual obligations are being approved at this time, meaning whether it's in the CBA or whether it's like our bus, you know, costs or special ed costs. That's so we've minimized expenses going out and to see how some things are encumbered that we know will flesh out and put a probably between 60,000 to 80,000 back end we're aware of right now, but we just don't want to treat that with very carefully right now, given that balance.
So did anyone have any questions on what they received?
Yep. Yes, I'm still just monitoring, obviously, these, you know, the changes in the benefits for the teachers, right? So you still have all these negative. Do those just kind of wash out at the end or how does? Like, for example, I'm looking at line 50110, the teacher salaries amount remaining negative 56,000.
Mm-hmm.
How does that get resolved?
Nope. Go ahead. Okay. So I'm not sure that that will be resolved. That is encumbrances that we have for the current teachers that are on staff right now.
So that line won't get resolved, but it'll come from somewhere else?
Right. So in possibly hiring a teacher at a higher level than someone who left possibly, they knew they would be making an adjustment and not being able to spend line in another account.
So the overall process is the bottom line.
Right.
So we don't, we don't have the practice where, some practice is to shift monies in line so it always looks positive. We have a process and practice where we want to see the negatives. So for budgeting the following year, we know where maybe we should have, we under or over budgeted, so we try to make as accurate budget as possible. So we really are looking at that bottom line. Kate and the team are well aware of, okay, in special ed, I know I'm saving money here because that child's service has changed and we contracted. So I know I've got 10 grand there, but I had to spend my money on an ESP. So that's, they keep track of that, which is why we've frozen the budget right now.
Any other questions on that? So then, like, if we were to have a special ed student move in or something that we needed? Right, we have the special ed trust funds. Was that always going to happen, unanticipated funds or would be needed?
Yeah.
Child's funds are good to have. You know, middle trust, things like that, on a very unexpected cost.
Any other questions? Okay. We can move on to the board reports. So Superintendent's Committee, we had our discussion groups on October 25th with multiple stakeholders. So we had students, admin, paras, teachers, support staff, and community members from each town there. And we gave, the steering committee gave them each forms and then they met with our candidate, who was Esther. And they had a, had great discussions and filled out the feedback. And the feedback was then taken back to the search committee the next day. We went through their notes and crafted questions based off of that and what we received through the survey. And then on November 1st, there was an interview with a search committee, which included a member from each of the discussion groups. We had, we had that, we had great discussions there. And then we moved the candidate forward to the joint board. So tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, there will be a public interview for the joint board and for the public to watch as well. So that's our update on that. Does anybody have any questions on that process or? Okay, great. Moving on to building committee. I know we had a lot of building talk at the last meeting, so I don't know if you have any updates.
Lot of building talk. Yeah, so at this point, I reached out to Stratum Rec. We talked about them as a stakeholder. So just to get some info, kind of in a big, broad, five-year plan, you know, do they see increasing programming? Where do they see Stratum Memorial fitting in? So that's a reach out. And then I think we're just planning school tours, which I'm excited about. And that seems to be the update at this point.
Brad did reach out from Vanwell, and he said he would type up the notes from his, when he was here, and he would send them to us just so that sort of captured the conversation you guys had during the workshop.
Okay, that's great. Any questions on building committee? Okay. Moving on to SMS administrative team report, draft budget presentation.
So historically, because this is just the initial run-through, at least historically, and Kate, of course, any board member, as well as you could change at any point, the members of the board take a minute to look it over. And then we kind of go over just the larger things that people, our attention are drawn to because at the next meeting, you have had time to digest it in its entirety. And then we kind of come back and go more line by line. If you have more like detailed questions, it's a lot to present it to you and be like, oh, I'm prepared to answer all these questions. So if you want to take a few minutes and look at it, then we can talk about some of the bigger items and then just have that initial conversation.
Sounds good.
It looks like you guys are planning, have a different plan for long-term subs?
Yeah. The, so it used to be sort of all in one line, and we're trying to make it a little bit more transparent. There's a difference between a permanent sub, who is someone that is hired, like with a letter of intent, and they're here every day, and they fill in wherever we need them. And then there's daily substitutes. And then we also have long-term, which is for like a maternity leave or a surgery or something like that. So there's really different categories, and it was try to flush some of that out a little bit more clearly.
But it looks like all those lines are going up pretty significantly.
Yeah. We, so as you know, substitutes are incredibly difficult to find. And it does become easier to have consistency knowing. So we were looking to have an additional permanent sub so that we have four every day would be ideal. Right now, we only have two. We have to fill one and putting in for a fourth. And then we do have, as you know, frequent maternity leaves. So there's a need for a long-term sub for that reason.
I also just had a question about like I-ready and all of that. Are those renewed every year? Okay, so that 25 grand is every year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's for the consumables. Well, both, online materials, teacher resources, and then consumables.
Is there a training and all associated with that?
When we originally did, yes. Now it would be if we felt like there was a specific area we needed, we could do that. SAU 16 has also partnered with Carolyn Wister, who's a math consultant. And so she's been helping us unpack the ready classroom materials as well. So there's sort of been a cohesion across all the elementary schools.
So I guess that's just what I'm trying to figure out. So going back to that I-ready line, so.
What page are you on?
I'm on page six. So it looks like the budget changed, you know, it went up by 55 grand, but aren't I kind of anticipating those lines are similar every year?
So, well, a couple of things. So the reason they've gone up substantially is because that we, prior to last year, we did not have a math program. So that was a big jump, number one. And then we, as you know, we adopted a phonics program, and then we adopted a handwriting program. And so both of those are two new programs that we have to continue to, you know, the consumables and the teacher resources that you're going to have to do every year if you're adopting programs.
What's the non-requests?
Selena, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, sure. I think the way the spreadsheet is set up, Eric, is that the non-requests are non-contractual pieces. So anything that you'll see in the column that's labeled as payroll are the things that we must pay per CBA. And then non-requests are anything that we are asking for that is non-contractual in nature and perhaps new or different from previous years' budget.
Do you have a sense of what those things are? I know, I see the notes. It's all pretty much around specialist services, is that?
Correct. So for example, a feeding and swallowing specialist is a speech-language pathologist that has special training. And there are few in the state, and so some of our children may need that support. And the needs change year to year. So we have to make sure that we have money in the budget to make sure we can pay for these outside consultants.
Gotcha. So it's an estimate. There's not a known need specifically, but you have to budget for anticipated costs, and this is based on?
It is both. So there are some kids that we know that they need these things, and it will likely be deeded next year. But then there are other children that we may not know now, but the needs will evolve.
Did you guys do this with the new software?
Yeah.
Oh, no, not yet. Oh.
So just at first glance, it looks like the bulk of the increase is staffing and curriculum?
Technology. You want to go through the highlights? Are we, I didn't want to, are you guys okay with my?
Sure.
Highlights? Can you have one of nine or one of 15 on your page?
I have one of 15.
Okay, great. I was going to show you some of these. Okay. So I kind of want to preface this, that this has probably been the hardest budget for this administrative team to present to the board since our time together here. If you notice, in regular instruction, teacher salaries, there is an increase, a budget change of 95,000. But that is also representative of one less teacher. As we discussed at last month's board meeting with enrollment numbers declining, we are presenting a budget that would reduce us by one classroom teacher for the 22, 23, 23, 24 school year. At this time, given the way the current CBA is written, we don't know who that would be. There are a number of factors that play into who that person is. And the CBA dictates the order of which that would occur because this would be a reduction in staff due to enrollment declines. So on the front page, that's really the big item that I would want you to be aware of. Any other slight adjustments under regular education are just a realignment of some of the resources we need, but then also considering the number of things that have gone up. As you know, inflation is about 8.4%. So there's just things that have gone up. You know, everything from our notebooks to our paper, it's just markers, everything that we would use on a day-to-day basis have increased. The next big session, section rather, is special education. And I'll let Selena speak to any of the increases that you would have noticed in that section, the 1,200.
Sure. I'll direct you to page three on your report. There is the tuition private New Hampshire line, which is 1210-50563. We are increasing our request to be able to cover three students that may need to access out-of-district placement. The current budget has enough money for one. So we want to make sure that we reflect that potential need for next year. And then there's a corresponding, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to flip forward to the special education transportation line, which is on page 13. There's a corresponding increase there as well to make sure that we have adequately budgeted for kids to be able to access out-of-district placement. Transportation is very expensive. So just to give you context, we have one student who is accessing an out-of-district placement, and the, the transportation cost is just under $50,000 for the year.
Do we anticipate any revenues coming in from, people coming here?
No, but we do have an option for what's called special education aid. It was formerly known as catastrophic aid. So for students that have expenditures in excess of roughly $70,000, there's a mechanism by which districts can apply for reimbursement of their costs beyond that 70,000. So for this year's budget, we actually, or this year's fiscal year, we were able to recoup about $28,000 for some expenses we had last year. And I will also mention that for preschool, we, for our typical peer role models that come to our preschool, they do pay a tuition. It's a modest tuition amount. And this year, our total anticipated revenues are about 50,000 for our preschool program.
So if you were to move forward to pages, page four or five, I'd like to call your attention to the guidance salaries, so 2120-50110. We currently have two school counselors. One is full-time. One of them is .8% this year. However, only .6% of her salary is in the operating budget. We used our ESSR funds, which were the federal funds granted through COVID, to pay for her to have a fourth day this year. We would like it to move over to full-time next year, which means .4% will go into the operating budget because currently it's .6%, .2% from the ESSR fund. So we'd be adding a .4% in the operating budget. So that would be another increase that you would see there that would want to draw your And then on page six of 15, going back to what Jennifer had talked about, where you see that substantial increase, it's the adoption of two programs this year and one last year that has a substantial impact on the curriculum line. And then as you get further down the top, sorry, the bottom of page six and through seven, that is our technology line. And you'll see a substantial increase in that under the hardware section. So did it go onto page eight, actually? Yep, it went onto page eight, I apologize. So you'll see the request for 191,000, which is 127 over this year. And that's simply to get us back on track after the technology used during COVID. So if we think about the one-to-one devices that were used, you know, every day for, for two years or close to two years, the wear and tear on those is, they were never expected to manage that wear and tear, and certainly they've all reached their capacity. And so we need to get working devices back in the hands of our teachers and our students, our staff and our students. And then another contributing factor to that is that prior to our time together here, the ESPs did not have devices at all. And so our first year, Chromebooks were purchased for them, but they were meant to be for three years, and we're now in year five. And so the 39 ESPs need new Chromebooks as well. And that's simply just to support the work that they do with students. So that's the big change that you would notice in the technology line that I referred to earlier.
Kate, can I just ask, so it's, it's like end-user devices? Is typically what this number is?
Yeah.
It's not around any infrastructure or anything?
No, it's not around the servers or things like that. Those are numbers that are given to us by central office because they manage that for us. And then last year, the biggest thing we had was that all of our, I don't know what they're called.
Routers.
What are the things on the ceiling?
Wi-Fi access points?
Yeah, thank you. We had all, we had 62 of them replaced last year, and that's the information we would get sent from central office. We don't have something like that coming right now. And three years ago, we replaced two of our servers. So I think that we're kind of like waiting for our next cycle to come. This is more the in, in the building use of students and staff.
Kate, can I just ask you? So over second graders, second graders and older, it's one Chromebook to one kid?
Yes.
And then K-1, it's one iPad to one kid?
We have that capability right now. We're not using them like that. We're trying to, as we come back from COVID, we're trying to really balance technology use. I think many teachers are trying to use it less than they did prior to COVID, just in a way to sort of familiarize themselves with like pen and paper again, because, you know, handwriting with, like, things like that. But it's also been, Steve Gaggen has really filled a new role as sort of in the Makerspace 2.0. And so he's doing a lot more collaborating with teachers. And so we have sort of classroom sets right now that go between K and one while we were, we work to replace some of the new iPads. Some of our iPads are just, you can't update them anymore. So they're really hard because they don't scan in clever badges or things like that. So there's the need to have more of those as well.
Okay.
I would say, Jennifer, in the K-1 classes, the way I see them used the most is students using them to add their work to CSOW and to do reflections. That's sort of, I think, their biggest use. So they're used every day, but you don't usually walk into a classroom and see, you know, 15 kindergarten kids with each with an iPad. It's more throughout the course of the day when they're uploading to CSOW. Whereas second through five, you would see them, you know, more consistently using them as a classroom for a variety of tasks. One of the things we realized, which was a really good learning experience for us, was that in K and one, because they use the iPads, which are touchscreens, when they had to then take assessments on the, in the fall on Chromebooks that weren't touchscreens, it was really difficult for them to switch over and navigate. So that is the Chromebooks that, we ordered one classroom set this year, they'll be touchscreen moving forward for that transition. So really, the next piece that you would want to go to is when we get to maintenance, the remaining stuff is more contractual stuff. It's not things that we really have much control over. The biggest thing you'll see in maintenance is across the board, everything is more, everything is more money in maintenance. You know, everything from oil and propane to electricity to, and all of those things are just more money. Someone was, we were at central office the other day doing budget, and someone had said they locked in oil at 6 something, you know, and a year ago, it was locked in at like 240. So when you think about those, there are pretty substantial changes when you're, you know, heating a 90,000 square foot building. But the other piece too, to, just to be aware, last year, we did create the safety and security line, which is on page 12 of 15. And you'll notice that we continue to keep some money in there so that we continue to keep our building safe. We did take the repeater out, as we talked about at the last meeting. That's really the lines that we can even talk about because rest is more contractual and we can't affect them. Oh, shoot, thank you. So this time of year, we always get a guarantee from the state of like a maximum for health insurance increase, the GMR. And in my time here, it's been like really low. This year, it's 15.6.
Six.
15.6, which isn't. 15.6, which isn't a lot.
Out of curiosity.
So when you look at our budget, that's it.
It's on page 14.
Yeah, it's like a huge.
That is a huge.
Esther, I was just thinking about when we did for the SAU budget. It seemed like, I know it came, I think it was anticipated to be lower, it came a little bit higher, but this is like double that, right?
Eight point four, I think, is what we thought it was going to be.
We thought it was going to be 8.6, which was reflected in the SAU budget. And then we got the GMR, and it was 15.6.
Wow. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
This did come up in another meeting I was at, like, when is the last time we shopped around? Or, I mean, do you, do we shop around our insurance rates?
It's contractual.
It's contractual. So when you negotiate, you can shop around for your district.
Uh-huh.
But once it's negotiated, the plans and options are set until a new contract is negotiated.
Okay.
So during negotiations, that's the end of public. That's when some districts choose to shop around. When they're negotiating, you use that as negotiating with the teachers and/or ESPs.
The teachers just negotiate.
It was last year.
At the end of the year, you'll be three years out at least. Yeah, they have a four-year contract.
I mean, did that come out during teacher negotiations?
It's always looked at, and it wasn't a major negotiating point.
Major negotiating point, yeah.
Are there like consortiums or other ways to do that? Just thinking down the road?
Yeah.
You know, once you, once you get into the contracting period, if you can come to some agreement?
Yeah, there's a variety of ways to do it. Usually it's Health, usually it's Health Trust.
Health Trust is one of the bigger ones.
And they'll pull different plans together, you know, different co-payments, different options of point of service or HMOs or, so there's a variety of different packages to put together, more expensive, less expensive. So we're only going to offer the highest deductible, least expensive plan, you know? So it's that kind of negotiating when you talk about shopping around. There really isn't a lot of shopping around to do, other than the plans themselves. And Health Trust manages a lot of those plans. And then we say, look, we want to look at a plan that's going to be a big reduction, or we're going to keep the same plans, but we're going to have the percentage change, you know, that the district pays or the employee pays. So there's two kind of negotiating ways to look at that when you're talking about health insurance.
Thank you for reminding me. Should have been the number one thing I said. I apologize.
So just so we're clear, we'll have, is there three more meetings for this, right?
At least.
At least. Yeah, I was going to say, that's what I remember.
I think that will come.
Yep.
Next month. Yep. I sent out the FAC members, the, I think I see you do the dates. And they'll, we usually meet from 6:00 to 7:00.
Yep.
And present the budget. And then you guys, you know, give us indicating, and then ready as you all are set to go for that first public hearing, and then for the town meeting.
Okay. So we have time to kind of look this over and go through it a little bit?
Yep, absolutely. And that's usually what we try to get it to you in November, so you have time. And then go through it with the FAC in December, and then more time, so.
Okay.
Does anybody have the latest enrollment numbers for every, for K through?
It's in your board packet.
Right in the packet, Eric, at the end of the packet.
Somebody?
So enrollment K through five is 510, enrollment through K through five is 536.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? No, I think we'll have, it'd be good to have time to kind of look this over. So. Nothing else on the budget? Thank you for that, Kate. We'll move on to old business, which was board goals. And we, I just wanted to double-check on that with everybody, because we had talked about it. We did our goals, I'm trying to remember, Esther, help me. We did our goals. It was prior to the election.
It was right before the election. I feel like it was late February, early Mar, right before elections.
And then we had the election, so we have new board members on. So I just want to make sure everybody's okay, because it felt like a large gap. And if anybody wanted to reattack that, just so that we had, had the chance to mull it over one more time, and just kind of, kind of see how everybody was feeling about it, I just wanted to leave that out there, because I felt like it was a big gap for people that were just elected and then waiting a whole year, so. Anybody had any comments?
Yeah, and I think it's always nice if you get on the cycle of kind of setting your goals in May for the future year.
Yeah.
And I know that that was, that's the plan that we, how we left it, but, so that's what I have so far. But if you want to check, change that, we can change that. But I, we were trying to get on that cycle, spring to spring, I think, after the board members get, you know, elected on in March, kind of orient in April, maybe have a workshop in May around board goals. So just let me know if you want to change that.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt, I just want to correct something. If you, it was not the last page, it was the second to last page.
Oh, okay.
I was, like, misjudged that.
Thank you.
Kate, you're specifically talking about our goals.
Yes, the board goals, yep. So I just wanted to throw that out there to see, you know, especially for people who are elected and are only sitting for one term, and then they don't get a chance to kind of get involved in that process, that was kind of what we was thinking. So just wanted to throw that out there. If we want to leave it until May, that's fine. I just wanted to revisit, so. Yeah, I know for me, I'm kind of in favor of revisiting it, just because, like, if I look at these board goals, they're not necessarily who this current board is. And then I know, you know, we've talked about in the past, like, having measurable goals or, you know, things that we can actually kind of look at with data. And I think, like, if we were to meet and sort of come up with some goals, you know, and then revisit it again in May, I think that would sit better with me. And I don't know how you feel about that, Eric, with them.
Yeah, you're only on for the one year.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think, I think there's board goals, which are good. I agree. It'd be nice if those were more measurable, more targeted. And then there's, I think Department of Education 303 is, we have an obligation to set educational goals for the district.
Mm-hmm.
That's an obligation that we have, and I don't think we've done that. So I think that, I see that as different. That's why I asked if we're specifically talking about board goals or we're talking about other goals? So.
Do you think that's something, sorry, I said, do you think that's something we could affect now, at this point in the year, for, because I, because there's, and I'm arguing for and against, I'm just trying, I'm thinking out loud. I definitely agree that this should be on a May cycle. It just, I think it just makes sense. We have new members coming, new board members coming in, potentially, people who are elected to the board are elected because they align with certain views of the town. So it'll be more reflective of what the town is asking for. And I think if we were to do a workshop right now, our goals would be the budget that we're going to do anyway, planning for the building that we're going to do anyway. Yeah, okay, maybe there'd be a couple of other things. And I'm, listen, again, not arguing against, I'm just, do we think we could have an effective effort right now for the remainder of the year by resetting goals?
Is that a question to me?
I, I think it's for just like the group, but I didn't mean to be a mic drop event. I just was, I'm just like trying to, to, to think out, because you're right, I mean, these goals are outdated, right? They're not necessarily relevant anymore. But I also just want to make sure if we're taking the time, that it's time well spent, because we have a lot of work to do here and with the building. And a couple of other initiatives, so.
But I guess, like, just to kind of go off that, Ken, it's, you know, we could think about how we structure our agenda, what subcommittees are important to us, what policies would we bring up sooner rather than later? You know, I think that this board is awesome. And I think that we're really engaged and interactive with the agendas, and I just think it'd be great to have a, you know, goals that reflected that, too.
Yeah, that's, I certainly can't argue that either. Yeah, I'm just processing out loud.
Yeah, me too. Well, we could plan to maybe rewrite one of them now and not take on the whole thing, or, I'm just thinking out loud, but.
Kate, can I offer a suggestion?
Yes.
What boards often do is start a, send me what they're ideas, and then I put them in a Google Doc, that then go in the next board packet, and then you talk about them. So you can't, I can't do a shared doc at first, because that can, right? But if you send me by a certain date, I can put them all in a shared doc and then send them out to all of you in the packet, so you could have them to look at at least a week ahead, what everyone else was thinking about, and then talk about it at the next meeting, if you want it on the agenda for the next meeting.
So that would, that would just be held at the next meeting? I know in the previous time, we've done a workshop just on goals.
Yep. I would recommend that you do a separate workshop, and maybe even if you only, because December is a busy month, maybe start at 5:00 and do 5:00 to 6:00 board goals workshop, if you want to do it in December.
Okay. Does everybody think about that? Even if we come up with one new goal to add?
And subtract one, we can subtract the COVID one.
Yeah, I mean, I just think things are constantly changing. It might be good to kind of reassess as they're changing. Is anybody open? Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Anyway, I mean, I think we've already seen it kind of reflected in our current meetings, where we talk about, you know, enrollment numbers and testing data and all of that. And it'd be nice to have our goals represent that. Okay, so we'll send you ideas. You'll put that in a document, and then maybe we can meet earlier in the, in the December meeting?
Sure, so if you could send me something by, if our meeting is, I think it's December 14th, right?
Yep.
December 14th, you can send it to me like by December 5th.
Okay.
Because the packet will go out for 7, 8.
Okay.
So I'll put them all in one, and then if we, we'll post it. A meeting, a meeting to start at 5:00, and then like we kind of did with the building group.
Yep.
We did a 5:00 to 6:00 building, and then we started it, the, continued on in the meeting, but we did the public input after that.
Yep.
And we said the public input would be at 6:00, like, on the agenda, we listed it.
Right.
5:00 to 6:00 was the discussion of the building, and then so people know when the public input is. And if they want to come listen to the board goals, then they have time to comment on that after they've heard the conversation.
Okay. That sounds good. Does everybody sound okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, moving on to new business is the policy review. I know Erin's not here tonight, but she kind of sent a little bit of information on that. It sounds like this, and maybe you can help me out, but this is just, we're just reviewing this, there's not, no changes.
Correct. There are no changes to any of these. These are all recommended by our auditors, et cetera, just to look at one more time. They're all RSA-bound.
Right.
Again, the policy committee made no changes to these, so I'd recommend that you approve them, since there's been no changes to the last time you approved them.
Right. And this is, we need to approve them tonight, or is this the first read? Or how does this usually?
You can approve them tonight if you choose to. You can also do a first read, and I can bring them back. But where they haven't changed and they're old, they're not new policies.
Right.
My recommendation would be to approve, because you approved these already, essentially, and there's been, nothing has changed.
It's a very exciting reading, in case you want.
Yeah, isn't it?
Yes.
Good bedtime reading. Did anybody have any thoughts on these, or?
They're really straightforward.
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah, they're pretty straightforward, so I'm.
Does anybody want to make a motion to approve them? Or do we want to come back and revisit?
All motion.
Okay.
Jen, are you comfortable with that? You were quiet.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to ask a quick question about the bidding requirement. So it's like 10 green. Kate, is that ever, like, that feels good to you?
It's always been that way since I got into administration.
Yeah.
You put out an RFP, and then companies bid if they want to or not. Sometimes I find if it's not a lot over $10,000, you don't get a lot of bids, especially right now, where people are more busy.
Yeah.
So sometimes you put it out, and then you, like, Benwell would like then contact potentially, be like, I'll network for you to see if I can find three or four people to bid, because you really do want it to be competitive.